This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Yeah, I'm sure, I know.
I'd like to call a special board of finance meeting for June 14th. We have one item in our agenda, and one and only item, to begin with. If the first selectman could take us through what he is requesting of us.
Thank you, thank you, Richard. So, for those that are here this afternoon, and for those watching on North Haven TV, I wanted to set the stage for this afternoon's meeting. Today, it's a two-part meeting schedule. This is a special board of finance meeting to vote on a request that I'm making, and then after this, there will be a special board of selectmen meeting to call a town meeting to discuss what's being voted on here this afternoon. Over the course of the past couple of years, I've been on a relentless mission. And it's been a mission that has involved a very important concept here in town, and that is to enhance school security. Specifically, at our high school and our four elementary schools. Our middle school, just from a point of reference standpoint for those watching on TV, the middle school was completed last year and is completely up to regulations and specifications from a school safety standpoint. The two-part plan that I've been working on involves engaging the Board of Education, our police department, and our Board of Police Commission. And today's meeting is a meeting designed to vote on the request. What we'd like to accomplish is a two-phase program on enhancing and putting in and integrating a robust school security system. The first phase is going to be discussed here tonight. I'm looking to add school resource officers, or supernumeraries, in four elementary schools, that's four supernumerary officers there, and one in the middle school, there's already one in the high school. This would mean that each one of our schools, elementary, middle, and high school, will have a dedicated school resource officer that would be a certified police officer. They would work the same schedule that our schools are in session. That's roughly 182 or 183 days a year. Our goal is to have this in place at the start of this coming school season. As you know, the schools are closing for the summer in June. The goal here is to have these school resource officers in place by the end of August when the school season starts. So, I'm working with Chief Tom McLaughlin, the Police Commission, and the Board of Ed. What we would plan on doing as we move forward, and hopefully this gets voted forward, we would offer the positions to current North Haven police officers who may consider retiring to take those positions. That would open up new positions in our police department. The advantage of that, ladies and gentlemen, would be that the individuals who may consider taking the school resource position, current North Haven police officers, are already known and widely accepted throughout our community. Many of them have been in the schools already, so we think that would be a seamless transition. We believe, myself, Chief Tom McLaughlin, the Police Commission, and the Board of Ed, that we have to do everything we can to totally enhance and secure the safety of our schools to protect our children here in North Haven. So, tonight, what you're going to hear, you're going to hear me ask for an appropriation out of our current fund balance for $220,000 to fund the school resource officers starting in August to start the next and upcoming school season. The $220,000 would be for the five officers, keeping in mind that they would be working 182, 183 days a year, and keeping in mind that they would not be working in the schools for the balance of that. So, in effect, it's half a year, hence, five officers at the $220,000. This would be put in place again at the start of this coming school season. So, you're going to hear some resolutions tonight. By charter, the Board of Finance is required to request the appropriation out of the fund balance. And the reason we're doing that is because this expense, the $220,000, is a non-budgeted item for this fiscal year starting July 1st. So, what we would do is appropriate the money out of the fund balance, fund the school resource officers starting in late August, and then in subsequent years, we would budget that item. That'd be a regularly budgeted item to fund those school resource officers in ongoing years. And that kind of sets the stage, ladies and gentlemen. And then later in the year, I'll be presenting a more detailed security approach on how to enhance, from an infrastructure standpoint, each one of the elementary schools, who are approximately 60 years old right now, in an effort to help protect our children for the future. So, that board of finance is the general overview.
I mean, it would be a group of retirees that you would draw from so that if someone was out, it would get replenished with someone else that's on the list. I think you answered most of the questions, I think we can have. Questions for our first selectmen?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
In the resolution, it says $220,000.
Yes.
Does that include liability increases due to the addition of these five SROs?
What do you mean by that, Pat? I don't understand.
Well, there must be liability insurance associated with positions.
Well, the town has liability insurance.
Will it be increased?
No, because it's still police, it's still police officers.
Okay.
They're still, they're still certified police officers. I don't think anything changes on the town side. My understanding is it's strictly, there's no benefits that go along with these positions. It's strictly a wage.
Strictly a wage.
So, $220,000 is your total, the total estimate?
Yeah, I believe it's listed as the recruit's starting pay. So, it's not like it's at a full-scale officer, it's at a, almost a, yeah, it's recruits number.
So, Pat, just to further answer the question. The $220,000 we're requesting out of the fund balance is the total amount, the total expenditures. There will be no more expenditures over and above that.
Okay.
So, that is the total amount. And look, I'm willing to answer any other questions here.
I have a couple more.
Yes.
What, I'm looking at minutes from the Board of Ed dated March 26th, where the board members voted on the resolution to have the five SRO officers in place. And I'm not quite certain why we are just working on this now, and it wasn't included in the town budget.
Well, because by the, when the town budget process was starting, we were faced with other issues.
Yes.
And we did not have yet thoroughly vetted out, Pat, the intricacies of this supernumerary program. As an example, we had to work with the pension plan company to ensure that there was no pension plan violation by moving potentially existing North Haven police officers from a model where they're fully employed now to retire to take an SRO position. How would that adversely affect the pension plan? There were so many details to work out on this that we didn't have worked out until probably the last six or seven weeks. That was probably the biggest thing. Then, we had to get a memorandum of understanding from the union to ensure that they were on board with this. So, behind the scenes, the chief and I, and Bill Ryan, and Ed, were really trying to button up all of the details that are so important to be buttoned up in a program like this.
Okay. One other question.
Yes.
What is the evidence that SROs help security, or improve security?
Well, there've been a series of articles written that describe the effectiveness of SROs, the presence itself. There have been many examples of SROs in other cities and towns. In terms of pure statistical data, I'm not sure if there's really any, but I think that the abstract aspect of it is... And a good example is I've been in the schools talking to the teachers and the principals. Today, I was over at Monowee School. They want the peace of mind knowing that there's a presence there. So, there's a great abstract intrinsic value to this.
I agree with that. I think the psychology of the staff and the teachers is important.
Yep.
And this can add value in that sense.
Does, I mean, interrupting Pat, but Mike, or perhaps the chief, does an SRO carry a site arm?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Well...
Yes. This would be, this would be a police officer in a uniform capacity and likely in a more informal, maybe in a BDU and maybe a golf shirt, like they use often, the look a little bit. So, that's, that's the game plan right now, that that person would be carrying a site arm and would have all the necessary equipment to fulfill the duties of what we would expect of any police officer.
And that police officer would retain the same arrest powers they currently have as an officer of the town?
Absolutely. And that's, and that's why if we move forward with this, I would say that we'd have to be a certified police officer. You want somebody there that can act in that capacity immediately.
I want to just also, because some of the board of finance members may not be aware of what I'm about to say. Our police department, Chief Tom McLaughlin, have done a great job in patrolling the schools over the past year, year and a half or so. So, in effect, what we have is, we've had police officers patrolling the parking lots, stopping in the schools. So, if we consider the fact that there is an identity already that's taken place, a comfort zone that's already been experienced by teachers, faculty, and students with the gradual integration of what Chief McLaughlin has done, this, to me, is the next step by having them permanently in the schools for every hour of every day that those schools are in session.
Could I ask the chief something? How frequently do your officers have continuing education classes in mental health training?
Every three years, we have 60 hours of mandated training to be recertified as police officers in the state of Connecticut. In the course of that time, there is a, I believe it's a two-hour block that they receive, mental health training. There is added training that some of them will receive, but the minimum would be the two-hour block within the 60 hours that are mandated by the state of Connecticut.
Every three years?
Correct.
So, the current crew, the SROs that you're thinking about, would they be trained in mental health, current mental health training?
And some of them have already been. There's a few that are, have expressed interest in this program. One that was a SRO in the high school for a number of years. He's got a very good working knowledge of that already. Obviously, there would be some training that would need to be added when we put these people into the school.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, do you have anything?
Oh, I did have one more. My understanding is that SROs are not involved in school discipline. Is that your understanding?
Our SRO right now is not involved in any school discipline issues. That's, that's a Board of Ed issue.
All right, thanks.
Those are good questions, Pat, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. We currently have one resource officer that rotates between the schools or stays at the high school?
Stays at the high school.
Stays at the high school.
Yep.
So, so the five being added would bring us to six, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, six.
The, yeah, we've never examined, you know, what the role of the SRO officer, and I don't, I'm not schooled in the science of it. But the, the main hours spent by a resource officer, is it more or less as a diplomat or a representative of emergency services in order to educate kids on citizenry, safety, and the possibility of a career in that kind of service?
I'm sure that during their contacts that they have with the student population in the course of the time that the SRO is there at the high school, that that will come up in discussion. But primarily, they're there to create a, and provide a safe environment for the student population and the staff. And that's at the high school right now. To just expand on what you asked earlier, or someone asked earlier, he does, on occasion, go to the middle school. And if there's something that is pressing at one of the elementary schools, he will take a ride over there as well, because he's schooled pretty well in the juvenile justice system. I mean, we all are, but he's at the, more at the cutting edge. So, again, not only as far as getting added training, perhaps with the mental health issues, you know, these individuals that work in a school environment would have to be, you know, made sure that they are up to speed with any changes with the juvenile justice system, which, quite frankly, is, it's a mess.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying that the role that they're in may be different than whatever role they've fulfilled already within the department. So, I, we were curious to know whether a certain job description or guidelines or preferences or work practices might be set up for SROs.
Right, and we do have, and we do have duties that are outlined for them not to be limited to. So, they are going to be asked to do a number of things as far as, you know...
Right, so if there's no national standard, and there may be, then it's possible for, you know, you and the Board of Ed and others to customize the roles of these people?
We already have it. And I just asked Valerie, because the way this works, the way this unfolds, there's an ordinance being drafted that has to get voted on at the town meeting that shows the specificity of the role. So, that's kind of what you're asking. So, Val's going to bring the proposed ordinance that we'll be presenting to the town meeting, and I can maybe highlight some of the components of what the role would be. So, our goal is to secure the money, the $220,000. So, this is the draft ordinance, ladies and gentlemen, that will be presented to the town meeting. This is an ordinance that'll be entitled Chapter 163. It talks about a declaration of purpose, what I just summarized earlier, a program description, and the general duties of the supernumeraries. And I'll just read, I'll read this. Will include, but not limited to, be visible at all times, monitor morning and afternoon bus and parent guardian drop-off locations, monitor visits to the schools, monitor student hallway traffic, monitor cafeteria areas during lunch, monitor outside student activity, patrol the exterior perimeter of the schools, patrol the interior perimeter of the schools. Reserve, document, and investigate minor complaints. Assist, though this part is how the resource officer will work with the administration of the schools. So, there'll be, as an example, assisting school officials with conferences as that SRO may be requested, and even coaching and mentoring youths where appropriate. The program term is that it shall take place 15 days after the publication of this ordinance. This is what we've put together. This will be presented again at the town meeting, and shall remain in effect through the fiscal year 2023 unless any action on this chapter is taken by the town meeting. So, we have this ordinance, and it will be presented to the public at the meeting, which is where it should be presented, where it's supposed to be presented.
I want to, I want to comment. Chief, just listening to Mike with this ordinance, there's some demanding duties there. And we're also talking about retirees. So, is there going to be a physical testing to, so the person can handle this, walking through the schools and the outside and the physical demands of this position?
Yeah, these officers are police officers right now. So, if they couldn't perform the duties that are outlined there, certainly, they would be having difficulty performing their duties as police officers right now. And we would have to have a fitness for duty exam at that point. But anyone that's going to go forward with this is, obviously, they're going to have to meet the minimum standard of the physical that most all the, I think, all of the town employees would go through. And if they have difficulties performing these, you know, this walking around the school or anything else, then, then they'll just be relieved. There'll be an at-will employee, they will have to go through the process of being appointed by the Board of Police Commission, and they'll have to seek reappointment every two years like any other supernumerary would. And if for some reason, they can't fulfill their duties, then they will be relieved, period.
The position does stand under the police department, so the chief has control of them, and the Board of Police Commission has its normal review process.
The, so, in looking, listening to the ordinance, it seems that though the mentoring aspect of it is extremely important, I'm just trying to determine how we can get value out of these positions in terms of education to the children, the awareness, and, and... Because more than just them waiting for some sort of incident or threat to occur, that, I'm sure any type of threat would be rare anyway. But, you know, how can, can this be a plus for the, for the role that the schools play? Whether they could be somehow integrated into the curriculum or have some sort of pre-scheduled role or class or tutoring or something to go and make this position really work? Why?
I don't see them being integrated into the curriculum, but their presence would build a relationship with the student body, which would probably help deter anything that may be in the wind, to put it a different way.
Yeah, and can I add to that?
And bullying, too, would probably go down.
As a parent of students in the school, you may think that there's not issues, but there have been many times in all the schools where you have families that are not families, they're broken apart, where there's been altercations picking up a child at the school, where one parent has a legal document saying they're a pickup, and that someone else tries to pick them up. And there have been many of incidences. And that's another place where if it escalates, there's someone there to assist with that. And as a, as a parent of children in the school, I fully support it, and it's about time. And I've been writing emails, and Mr. Freedon knows, about this very topic.
Yes. Now, the hours on a daily basis would be before school starts till after school ends? Does it go into the extracurricular time, or what, how does that work?
No, it would just mirror the school hours, Tom, go ahead.
No, this is, this is strictly going to be campus, campus security during school hours, normal school hours. For somebody to be there at drop-off, somebody to be there at the pickup time. And if there's any extra activity afterwards, then the Board of Education, as in the past, they've always, they always paid an outside duty rate to have a police officer or firefighter be present at any type of activity at night.
Just a couple of budget questions on this. The health benefits would be treated as though they are retired?
There are no benefits.
There are none.
But yes, you're right.
So, they're retired?
Right, right.
Okay. And the, the expense for this in future years, would it be coming from the police or the Board of Ed?
It should be covered under the police.
Yeah.
I mean, the chief needs jurisdiction over all this.
I would prefer that I take care of my budget.
Right.
And not, it's easier for me to take care of a $6 million budget than to somebody to take care of a $60 million budget.
And to that point, the chief McLaughlin just made the superintendent agrees. It would be on the police department side.
I understand why. The Board of Education, what, were you, were you present for any of their discussion on this topic at all?
No, I was not.
No, okay. I just wanted to know, you know, feedback from the first selectmen or someone as to, you know, what their discussion was about, and did they take any, any action?
Yes.
Or set up any preferences of standards or requests?
So, what I did months ago, Michael, I met with the superintendent and the chairperson of the Board of Ed, laid it all out. They liked it, they brought it to a Board of Ed meeting at my request, and they laid it out to the Board of Ed. And the feedback I got back was unanimously accepted by the Board of Education members.
Okay. And, and did they review this, the ordinance at all?
No, the ordinance had not been done at that point in time. But there was some feedback on the ordinance from the Board of Education, and that's why some of those components are in there.
Right. Because, you know, that's, that's an audience where, that this ordinance is going to affect.
Right.
So, by all means, if you need to fine-tune it, run it by Anita and company.
This is one of these concepts that we've been moving forward with rapid velocity. And that's why we wanted to call this meeting, that's why we've established a June 25th town meeting, that's why we've established the next meeting at 5:30 for the Board of Selectmen. And it's a concept that has unanimous support. Meeting with the Board of Ed, the superintendent, the police commissioner, of course, me, being the driving one, the chief McLaughlin. There's been no dissension on this at this point. Everybody, I think, recognizes how important it is.
Yes. Are there structural changes in place now in the elementary schools in terms of security?
No.
No, that's, Pat, what I've asked for and was just presented to me about a week and a half ago. So, I've got that. But I'm going to, I didn't want to incorporate that into this. That'll be the next discussion we have, because it's a very comprehensive, very expensive plan. This, I thought, would be the first way to start the process of overall school security.
I thought some of the locking mechanisms and so forth had already been initiated on all the buildings.
The middle school is completely up to date.
Three years ago, Michael and Pat and Board of Finance members, you know, we did things. We did some key card access upgrades, some security upgrades on the outside, buzzer alarms for some of the faculty. But it was not a comprehensive plan. It was sort of a stopgap plan. But the plan that I've asked for, that I received, is very elaborate and very extensive.
Well, I'm in full support.
I've heard a lot of comments from residents about the concern of having armed officers around small children. And that's a tough one. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, I support this because of the psychological effects. But I think it might help at your meeting next week to have some evidence that there is, that the program does work or has worked.
Well, I mean, there are instances on the news where there's, they've been stopped by supernumerals, or they've been resource officers in schools in tasses.
But that didn't happen in Florida.
It happened in Florida.
Right.
No, and you're going to find out that you're going to, the more you dig into this, some of the information that's out there, there are pro-gun people, there are anti-gun people, and some people will, in some reports that you read, will tell you that there's been 290 school shootings in the United States since Sandy Hook in December of 2012. The people that are, that say that that number is exaggerated, is the word I think they use, they only acknowledge 145. So, I guess they, they figure that 145 is okay.
Yeah.
They don't think that you should be counting suicides and people that have accidental discharges or people that shoot a gun in a school and just don't hit anybody. I think that's kind of insane. Any gun on any school is, shouldn't be tolerated. And, you know, except for the police officer there. This is the, this is the world we live in. And yes, they're, they're five and six years old. And I think if we soften the dress of the officer and don't make him look so rigid and so mean, and we, I think, I think it'll all come around. I think there's, you know... I think there's, you know, this is the world we live in, and unfortunately, they're not going to go back to the 50s and 60s or early 70s when we were all around. You know, it's 2018, and these poor kids are going to grow up in a far different world than we ever did.
So that's some great points, Chief. And Pat, I want to share with you something that was kind of provocative, and it just happened recently, because I've been out there talking to some of the schools and the PTAs, and one of the PTAs said to me that, yes, there might be some anxiety, but the benefit of it in terms of security enhancement outweighs the short-term anxiety that may be experienced. And, you know, to have a school resource officer not with a weapon dramatically reduces the safety aspect of it, in our opinion. So, but with that being said, that's why we're having a town meeting, and I'm getting the word out through the Board of Education to get the parents to come, and to either support it or talk about what their opinions are. And that's what we're doing.
Anyone have it, excuse me, anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, one comment, and I think the policeman in uniform creates an image of security. That's just my personal thing. They're dressed down with a piece, you know, he could just be another Joe with a gun. But if he's in uniform with a piece, he's a figure of authority, security. It instills, and especially in the youngsters, I think it would, it instills, you know, a greater impact to the younger students than him walking around in a tank top and a...
I don't think the chief would put him in a tank.
Well, just to give that as a gross example.
I'm sure they're going to have some designation on them as police.
Oh, absolutely. There'll be no mistaking that these people are police officers, and you bring up a good point. Their mere presence alone is going to be a deterrent.
Agreed, agreed.
And it's going to be a deterrent that, when done properly, I think it's going to eliminate some of the other garbage that takes place even in the hallways, the little bit of bullying or the shoving of people, because they know there's an extra eye on them, and they know it's an eye of somebody, like you said, a person of authority, somebody who's going to pull them aside perhaps, or bring it to the attention of a teacher and say, hey, you know what, Jim's not, he's not playing nice, and, you know, you know, you may want...
You know that about you, Jim.
And, but I think that's the added value that we, that you bring in there. And I think what it'll do, eventually, it will knock down some walls, and I think it's going to create some type of a, a little bit of a police and youth movement there where, you know, there's going to be dialogue, they're going to be engaging. And young people, especially in the elementary school, are very inquisitive. They're more apt to ask more questions, I think, of the police officer than of the middle school.
Sure.
And then eventually, when that elementary student gets to middle school, that wall's already going to be broken down, so then that's when you might see that engagement. And again, that's, that's my biggest concern, is that middle school group, you know, that's, that's where things change. That's where you bring four elementary schools into one melting pot of a middle school, and that's where we start to lose some of the kids. And I think by eighth grade, you can see some of them sliding.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
So you see this as an ongoing effort?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. And again, it does have some added value as far as the security, the security component is the most critical. You know, that's mission statement one. And then, and anything that we get added to that is just a plus.
I see a lot of positive insights behind the security, just by their presence. But if there's nothing else, I'd like to make the motion resolved. That is recommended that the Board of Selectmen call a town meeting to take action on this recommendation to appropriate from the unappropriated fund balance, if some not exceed $220,000, and for North Haven Police Public Schools Security Supernumeral Program to be established by ordinance at Chapter 163 of the Ordinance of the Town of North Haven to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled at the public schools in the Town of North Haven. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Remove. We do have a public comment on the agenda. There is the Board of Selectmen, if there's any public comment. Ms. Wemy? I'm sorry, Sally, did you have something, or?
Yes, I do. Yes, Sally Wemy, 5, awesome drive. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Overall, I'm supportive of the effort to put security resource officers in the schools. Obviously, you know, this whole issue of school security has been on the forefront for all of us in recent years, unfortunately, with so many tragedies, especially Sandy Hook right here in Connecticut. But I do have some, so policy-wise, I'm supportive of the effort to have a presence in the elementary schools and at the high school and middle school. I just have some questions. First of all, does the current SRO get benefits?
Yes, he's an officer, he's a regular officer.
A full-time?
He's a full-time police officer, he's not a supernumerary.
And part of, okay, and part of his duties are in the school?
Yes.
Or is that his exclusive duty?
No, that's only part of his duties.
Part of his, okay. And you said there'll be no, no benefits. Are they going to be independent contractors given 1099s, or will they get W-2s with, with Social Security and all that?
Can I end up with W-2s with, sorry, W-2s with no benefits?
Okay, so they'll have, you know, so it will increase our Social Security liability a bit and Medicare and all that.
Yeah, there'll be payroll taxes.
But I just wondered, because they could have been 1099 independent contractors.
Yeah.
And then you don't have to worry about that.
Right, but IRS will say no, because we direct them where to go. They have to report to us every day.
Okay, all right. So there will be some other wage-related liability from, by the town. You know, we have to, we have to double the payroll, right. And you said that the, there was some feedback from the Board of Ed on the ordinance, which I think was just completed.
Yeah, not the ordinance itself, some of the duties, as we discussed it with...
So some of the duties that are listed in the ordinance were reviewed? When you said with the Board of Ed, do you mean just the chairman or the superintendent?
With Dr. Cronin, that's right.
With Dr. Cronin, okay, so not really the Board of Ed. Okay, because I, you know, I'm going to save my comments on the ordinance for the Board of Selectmen meeting, because I have a lot of problems with the ordinance. And you said, will, you said that in your opening comments, that you're trying to engage the Board of Education in this enhanced school security. Will the Board of Ed be involved at all in the selection process of the SROs?
I would think not. That's below the jurisdiction of the Police Department and Board of Police Commission.
I understand that. Okay, well, because, you know, I think I remember that, I've seen so many meetings on TV, you know, it's hard to keep them all straight. But I don't recall at that March Board of Ed meeting, I certainly remember them discussing this plan for the SROs, and that the town would pay for it, and that made everybody happy. I don't know if there was any specific discussion about who was going to be hired and who would be responsible for hiring, so I don't know if this, hopefully not, but it might create yet another Board of Finance, Board of Ed clash about who's going to be, who's going to have any impact in hiring them. But I'm getting the sense that this is already a done deal. Are these positions going to be posted, or do we already have five people to take them?
Well, go ahead, Tom. Right now, I have one existing supernumerary who has expressed interest in this position, in one of the positions, if it were to, if the program were to proceed. I have three other police officers that have expressed an interest in retiring, they were at a retirement age, so they would retire it at the normal retirement, and then roll into or assume the role. So that would be four. There's still one that's on the fence, and if push comes to shove, then we would seek outside certified police officer to work in that capacity, a recently retired police officer, whether it be somebody from the state police or surrounding town. But, and to your other question, yeah, everything would be strictly from us. We'll be involved in the selection process, and we will assign who we think is best for the, for the school. The one that's critical in my mind is the middle school. That's, that's where I need to have somebody that's, I'm not going to say, I don't want them to play hardball, but I want somebody that's going to be there and that is, that's going to know how to really, really interact with these kids, and somebody that's really on top of their game. You know, that's, and they, they'll all be on top of their game, but, but that middle school, to me, is, that's where, that's where we have to really concentrate on this, you know?
Okay. Perhaps, okay. Well, as you know, Mike, we get, I've gotten some of the emails that you've gotten, about parents concerned about school security. I don't think there is concern, but I understand the issue that Ms. Fasickio brought up about potential skirmishes outside, and all, I mean, the number of disagreements that can occur in the school or in, outside the school, during bus pickup, kid drop-off, I mean, it's almost infinite of what issues can come up. But I think from, from most of the emails that I've received, people are concerned about the school shootings. That's the big issue. I mean, I understand it's important to have relationships with the kids, but I thought that the purpose of these security officers was to guard the doors, not to patrol the cafeteria and make sure they're not throwing food at each other and picking up their, I mean, that's what the teachers are doing, and they're professionals.
I don't think that's the case.
I mean, I want the doors guarded. That's what I want.
No, you bring up a good point. I don't mean that in a wrong...
That's fine, got it.
But unfortunately, when you get into a school environment, you have to look at the killing field, quite frankly. The, what, your largest kill zones are going to be where the kids congregate the most, and that's going to be cafeterias, libraries, outside activities. So that's why we have to keep an eye on that. Yes, the doors are going to still be locked, and there'll be somebody there to monitor the doors, but you've got to remember, there's a lot of doors that are in these buildings. And again, I don't want to promise anything to anybody, because, you know, we don't live in a vacuum. There are no absolutes in this life. There's certainly no life absolutes in law enforcement, okay? There's no 100% anything here, all right? But it's going to be far better than what we have. And I think it's, and I think what we can do is, we can start it, we can grow it. And security is, yes, that is, as I said, that's mission statement number one, but if we can do some other things there while we're there, I think that's, that's a plus. But we have to concentrate on where we have the largest congregation of students, because, you know, if you or I were to go and do something in a school environment, we don't get as much showtime if we only hurt each other. We're going to, we're going to get more showtime by hurting as many people as we possibly can. And that's why we have to keep, we have to keep our eye, and a keen eye, to where all these kids are. You know, that's, that's the big, that's our biggest, my fear, anyway. My big, my best day is going to be the day after school gets out. And we talked about this, the deputy chief and I talked about this last year. We walk into, we walk into work, and there's like a weight off your shoulder, because we are just sitting around waiting for something bad to happen. And when the school vacation starts, it's, it's like, it's like you almost have a vacation day, except you get made. You know, it's, you feel that good.
Thank you. Well, anyway, well, because of the chief's comments, again, I support this overall, because having a presence there is better than not having a presence there, certainly. I just would prefer that the primary focus be on preventing someone with a gun from getting into the school. That's, that's what I am most worried about.
You know, Sally, if I could interject for a second, I guess sort of to play on what the chief just said, when that shooting happened a couple of years ago, a friend of mine called me and said, he had a kid in the school too, he said, you know, he was concerned. He said, what should we do? And I kind of said to him a little bit what the chief said. I said, you know, I said, we can make the schools as safe as possible. They can be 100% safe. I said, you know what's going to happen? They're going to figure out that all the kids are at the soccer field.
Right.
I said, you know, and that's a little bit really what the chief just said, right? So I want my kids safe. They're in the high school, and they're in the middle school right now. And listen, my faith is in the chief and what he and his department knows, and if it's guarding the front door an hour a day and going to the cafeteria the rest, then I have to trust the chief. But I think, I think there is wisdom in that you can't just guard the front door. They're going to remember, well, just go around back. Look at the, the schools, the schools have big windows, right?
Yeah.
Some kid with an automatic rifle is going to be smart enough to blow out the windows and jump, and jump through into the classroom, right?
Right. Well, I was at Monowee School earlier this morning at the same event with the first selectman, and I counted 10 exterior doors, including the main door that we all go into. So there's 10 doors leading outside. So obviously, one SRO is not going to be able to cover 10 doors. I understand that, and that's why I still support this. One officer there is better than none, which leads to, I just have two more points to make, I'll make them as quickly as I can. One has to do with these number of doors. The first selectman has stated that down the line, later, we will have discussions of structural improvements. I don't know, are we putting the cart before the horse? I think that in my discussions with principals and other administrators in the schools, I think it would be prudent to have cameras at all of the exterior doors in the schools, and our one SRO officer could have a smartphone or whatever, or a device that could be monitoring all 10 exits or entrances, however you want to call it, doors, with the use of cameras. And I don't think it would really cost that much to put security cameras in. I mean, you're putting the, the security officer there, I think it's going to be impossible for him to do all of the other tasks that you've listed in the ordinance, plus monitor all 10 doors. But with security cameras, he could monitor all 10 doors with, with a, with a device. So I would really think about having those structural improvements in place before the SROs are hired. It's just, just a thought. And my final comment is financial. In fiscal year 1718, we took 1.7 from the unrestricted, 1.7 million from the unrestricted fund balance, and this year for 18, fiscal year 1819, we're taking 1,60,000 from the unrestricted fund balance. So our savings account is, is going down now. This is another 220. How are we looking with our 8% fund balance?
Si, I think when we put together the 1819 budget, we had mentioned that it was going to dip just below 8%, but I think with, hopefully with the end of the year this year and good management for next year, we could get it back up there, close to it.
Okay, so you're...
I mean, you've got to do what you've got to do. It's important.
Right. And of course, as the budget, you know, ekes its way toward the $100 million amount, that 8% is also climbing.
Correct.
So you're kind of striving to hit a higher number as well. And you foresee an additional 220 from the fund balances not being any problem with our 8% and our, and our very important AAA.
Everything that hits the fund balance, it takes away from it, but you've got to do what you've got to do.
Right, that's what I was, that's what I was saying. Right. And I would also like to echo Pat Brown's comment. I have a big problem procedurally with this. I don't, I heard the first selectman's explanation of why this $220,000 was not in the budget. I mean, the budgetary process is five months long, from January to May, and this, this SRO program was discussed in March at the Board of Education meeting, so it must have been discussed even prior to that. The first selectman gave two reasons why it was not part of the town budgetary process, that we had to check... that we had to check for pension plan violations, and to get a memorandum of understanding that it was okay with the unions. I think that would take about two days to get both of those things. I think this, this has, this process, I mean, the, the ink on the referendum, budget referendum ballots are not even dry yet, and we're going back to the town and saying, we want 220,000 more. It should have been in the budget, it was a very close budget, it only passed by 16. I think that this, I have a lot of problems procedurally. Procedurally, I still support the policy of adding the SROs to increase security, I want to make that clear. But I have a big problem procedurally with this. I think it should have been included in the budgetary process, which of course would have increased the mill rate a little bit, and maybe it wouldn't have passed, I don't know. But to, three weeks, four weeks, not even four weeks after the referendum, to be seeking 220,000 additional funding just is not proper local government financial procedure, in my opinion.
Well, I have to disagree.
Yeah, you can.
I think, I think it's perfect government procedure, because we're complying with the town charter, and this is so important that I would never allow this to get lost in the shuffle with everything else that we were doing and contending with during the budget season. I wanted to make sure we had all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. The union memorandum, we have a union president who's been out on disability, the pension issue is a very complicated issue, and I wanted this issue addressed as a separate issue because of the importance of it. So I'm very comfortable with the process.
Mike, oh, I think it should have been part of the budgetary process. And as Ms. Fasickio said, it's about time, I mean, Sandy Hook was almost six years ago, so, you know, and we have taken other steps since Sandy Hook to improve our, our security. I understand that, and many of them are, are not public knowledge for, for good reason. But, you know, here's, here we are, Mike, I disagree 100%. This should have been included in the, in the budget because...
We are in 100% disagreement on this issue.
On this one?
On this issue.
On this one?
100% disagreement.
Absolutely, it should have been in the budget, it should have been part of the referendum, it should have been presented at the public hearing and at the town meeting, there was plenty of time to get it done in time. And, but those, those procedural problems that I see do not affect my overall support of the increased security, because after all, this is what we're here for, to increase security for our children, and I do support it. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Someone make it?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the Town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.